I'd like to call this meeting to order. This time, I would call on Chief Mitchell. Department Ordinance Changes. Item number two on the agenda. Welcome, everybody.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Thank you for having me here today. We're going to talk about three proposed ordinance changes. We'll go through this fairly quickly. First of all is the identification of hazardous materials. Within our ordinances, we have a series of ordinance that deal with hazardous materials and how that works. And what we'd like to add to that is the adoption of NFPA 704. What this is, is a national standard. The National Fire Protection Association Standard Number 704. The 2017 edition deals with how rooms and buildings are identified if they have hazardous materials in them. So, for example, if an industry has a storage room specifically for hazardous materials within the building, this symbol would be on the door. Now, most of the businesses in towns comply with this already through OSHA or whatever. But periodically, you get one where they try to make their own system, and first responders get in there and we don't understand what they're trying to say. So, all's worth saying is, within Owensboro, we're going to be uniform across the board, and we're all going to use this system. And it shows you pictures of what that would look like. This symbol would be on the door, and it gives us an example of what's in that building as far as slam- flammability, health hazards, and things like that. So, we're just trying to get a uniform across the board. So, that would be the adoption of this ordinance.
How long's it been like this, Chief?
The 704 system's been around for probably about thirty years. And, like I said, most people in town use it, but not everybody. So, this would just give us a uniform.
And so, how do we get the word out, though?
We'll do that through our education.
Okay. Good. And is there a fine if they don't do their deal?
There would be, but I wouldn't anticipate that being an issue.
We need to review that.
So, I think we'll be okay. But there is, within the ordinance, it's already built into it, how the fines work and all that.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Next is an ordinance that we'd be adding in there that's would make us more efficient and our job a little bit easier. Right now, all sprinkler systems within the city have to be inspected through the fire code on an annual basis. They're inspected, tested through third-party companies that are licensed to do that. They have to write reports for that, and then we have to run and track them down for our annual inspections to make sure that's been done and find those. I'm just going to make it an extra step, saying that when they make these reports, they make a second copy and automatically send them to us, so we don't have to track them down. So, it's just efficiency, make our job easier, and our inspections go quicker.
You don't have a regular guy that does inspections anymore, do you?
Well...
Like Joe Taylor was.
So, what we're doing right now is, our Fire Prevention Bureau is now one and a half people, basically. And most of our inspections are done what we call grassroots, meaning the engine companies are actually doing them. So, like Station Two does the inspections in their area, but the more technical inspections than prevention does. If it's a larger facility, if it's healthcare or something like that, something that's more than just, you know, retail or strip malls or businesses, then they'll go do those. And then, they also do the apartments, the residential, and things like that.
Thank you.
So, this next one, it's under our ordinance, but I'm trying to actually make life easier for the police department on this one. For several years now, the fire lanes are defined under the fire code. So, we have fire lanes all over the city. Like, if you go to Kroger, Walmart, Lowe's, places like that, there's fire lanes in front. We designate, though. There's supposed to be no parking in those. There's been an ordinance in Owensboro for several years that added one little paragraph that said, "If the vehicles attended, a vehicle can sit there for three minutes." Well, this is impossible to enforce, and if you go to, like, any of the Krogers or IGA or anything like that, what has happened is, they've gotten so used to doing it, now they, the car sits there, they go in and do a week's worth of shopping, and come back out and the car's still sitting there. We're too busy, they're too busy, we can't enforce that. All's I'm asking is, let's get rid of that paragraph that says they can sit there unattended, get rid of that three minutes, and go back to a fire lane is a fire lane. So, those are the three ordinance changes. Are there any questions on those?
Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, this change?
Yes.
This is applicable only to the city, correct?
That's correct. I don't even, I don't know if the county has this or not. As far as I know, just the city does, I believe.
Okay.
So, what the ordinance, the way it reads now, it alters the fire code. Basically, we're just getting the fire code back to being unaltered.
That help us with our insurance rates, maybe?
Yes.
Good. Commissioner Vlada?
Would this also include, like, not necessarily fire lanes, but like, fire passages on behind centers, strip centers, and things of that nature, too?
Yeah. Anything that's considered a fire lane or a fire access road. So, and that's basically defined by us through site plans. So, if we, and there's width requirements. So, if an access road is narrower than a certain amount, then they can't park on it. And then, we'll inform the business of that, and they have to post that. And one thing I forgot to mention, by the way, that the local retail establishments are for this as well, because this is going to make their lives a lot easier in front of their stores.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, right?
Chief, if you can't enforce the three-minute parking, how are you going to enforce it if you don't?
Well, the reason we can enforce it now, because a police officer can't sit there with a stopwatch and say, "Okay, they've been there three minutes," or "I don't know how long they've been there." Now, it'll just be, if there's a car parked there, they can't be there.
Oh, I misunderstood.
So, it'll be easy.
I thought it was just, you know, you're not there. I mean, how does somebody stay in all of these places watching to see who's...
See, right now, let's say OPD drove through Kroger at Starlight, and there's two cars sitting there. Well, they don't know how long they've been sitting there.
Okay.
Commissioner Glenn?
Yes. Going back to the sprinkler inspections, you say that third parties do this. So, for the benefit of the public, give me an example of a couple of groups that typically go in and are certified to do the inspections.
Sure. Like, locally, Ohio Valley Sprinkler, they're actually out of Evansville, but they have a place here in town. And there's one out of Bowling Green, and I'm sorry, their name escapes me at this time, but they have to be licensed sprinkler companies.
They have to be licensed to do it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, all this ordinance is telling them is, when you make one copy, you make a second copy, you put it in the mail to me.
What about tying that second copied OMPC and just having them keep a file? Would that be out of the realm?
Well, the thing is, once the occupancy permit is signed, OMPC doesn't have anything to do with the building anymore. After that, it's ours.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
A fire lane's not unlike this handicapped parking that people just...
Right.
I mean, it's just embarrassing.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's a thousand-dollar fine. Can we do that, Chief? Can we...
Thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars. So, suits him, he said. I mean, that's crazy the way... Oh, go ahead. Next. Thank you, Chief. Anything else? Staff? No? Okay. Next item, oh, you're still up. An ambulance update.
We'll get the timeline up here for you. There you go. I just wanted to update you on the process. So, you may recall that the ambulance contract, the private contract expires July, or June 30th of 2018. So, we started the process this year. It's an RFP bid process. So, I just wanted to give you an update where we're at. So, back in May, I was able, we were able to get a draft together by using the current contract, plus, if you remember, the EMS study, we had several suggestions through that. So, we put together a draft. That went to an advisory committee, which was the emergency personnel in the hospital. And so, we did some revisions, and we got that work done. And then, we actually submitted it to the actual RFP committee, which is a smaller committee, mostly of lawyers. And that went to them July 21st. And then, after that, it'll go to the co-administrators. The co-administrators are the city manager and the judge executive. We hope to have that to them by the end of August. And then, if they have any changes, it'll go back to the RFP committee to go over those changes. And we're hoping to have, as of right now, the city's going to host the RFP process. So, we're hoping to have it to our purchasing agent by mid-September, give them about a month to work on it, get it out, and the RFP process will actually be advertised. We expect three or four responses on this. And then, over the winter, we're hoping to be able to actually pick the most responsible bidder and then start negotiations with them, and then hopefully have a contract in front of you by February or March of next year.
And this is independent of the county, is that correct?
No, we're doing it jointly right now. It's a joint process. So, both Steve Lynn and Claude Porter both sit on that committee, and they're actually reviewing the draft as we speak. And, like I said, by the end of this month, hopefully, we will submit those to Mr. Parrish and Judge Madenly to review.
Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Chief, at the end of the day, who's ultimately responsible for ambulance service in our community?
We, it's joint. Ed Ray, I don't know if you want to speak on this, did a lot of research as far as the law and all that way back when, and it's really gray. It's a gray area, it really is.
Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree with what Chief says, that I think each governmental entity has its own responsibility for coordinating that. There was a time when it was a county responsibility. That has evolved over the last several years. And so, that's why this is a joint submission, because the city and the county both will have responsibility, certainly inside and outside the corporate boundaries, depending on the entity. So, it's probably in everyone's best interest to look for somebody that will cover the entire county-wide system. And so, that's why we're doing a joint RFP through our purchasing system. You know, out of that mix, you can't exclude the biggest benefactor of that, which is the hospital. And, you know, I think that it makes sense in that the MEC, which is the entity that supervises and administers this contract once it's executed, which is primarily medical personnel and emergency responders, and the hospital has a big role in that. In my opinion, as, not as the attorney, but as executive from the management side of house, they should have a significant part of that responsibility. So, Chief's done a great job in continuing to be on their doorstep, letting them know that that's our expectation. And we hope that they continue to want to be a player in that, not just picking and choosing what they like and dislike about ambulance service, but also joining us economically for the, you know, for whatever an ambulance service may take to be a part of this community. We haven't given up on that.
Thank you, sir. It seems as if, if I remember correctly, that the certificate for ambulance service is basically held by Davis County, or the county in question in the state of Kentucky, is that correct?
Yeah, it's actually joint. The CON and the license is owned jointly by the city and the county. And it's under the name of Owensboro/Davis County Emergency Medical Services.
And I would assume the CON process in Kentucky is under review as we speak for everything.
Yeah, I've heard that.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Vlada? Is the city and county part just a subsidy? Because you get an ambulance bill regardless if you use that service. Is what we're doing just subsidizing that?
Well, so, what our contract is, is saying that every, our contract's emergency service only. So, our contract says that everything that goes through the 911 center goes exclusively to this one contractor. It doesn't mean that another contractor can't come in. If another contractor could successfully get a CON, which would be highly unlikely in this state, because that's the reason we have a CON process, that they could take direct calls. But what we're saying is, anything that comes through our 911 center goes exclusively to this contractor. We do not put anything in the contract about non-emergency transfers. And, because we just don't want to be part of that business. So, anybody that could get a non-emergency CON can come in. There's actually several businesses that do transfers in and out of Owensboro and Davis County. Ohio County, McLean County, AMR, there's several. There's even a contractor out of Illinois that comes back and forth and does non-emergency transfers. That's not the concern of the contract, and it never has been. It's just the emergency service. And I just want to add one thing. The split is about the same as dispatch. About seventy percent of the call volume is within the city.
What about your lift-assist program with this ambulance service? How do we justify that call?
So, the committee, at our last meeting, we discussed that at length. So, what he's talking about, the lift-assist, there's two different things. On an emergency situation, the fire department's already there, so we're going to help lift the patient and get them in. What he's talking about is, on the scheduled non-emergency transfers, when it's somebody just going to the doctor and things like that, we have citizens in our community that take six, seven, eight people to lift and get up in there. So, the current contract reads that the ambulance contractor has to pay the fire department, whether it be Owensboro, Thurston, Philpott, whoever, fifty dollars to assist with that, just to try to help with our expenses. There was some discussion about whether that should be more or less. The problem with that discussion is, right now, is the whole Medicare/Medicaid reimbursement rate. If they are a Medicaid person, that ambulance service is only getting reimbursed a hundred and fifty dollars for that transfer. And if we're taking fifty dollars of it, that means they're only getting a hundred dollars in to pay for their ambulance. So, if we raise that to, say, seventy-five or a hundred, we're taking that much more. So, it's something that the committee's considering and discussing quite a bit on what do we want to do with that language.
Well, and if they're not Medicaid patients, then they get a little more?
Yeah. Medicare reimbursement rate right now is around four fifty, I believe.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Glenn?
Yes. So, I know that the city fire department scrambles whenever they get a medical call at 911. Does the county do that, too, so that yellow and the Davis County Fire Department, they show up like our guys do to assist?
Yes, sir. Right now, the, through our dispatch center, it took a while, but we've got our matrix pretty much to the same, to where we're responding to the same type of calls. Now, there's, some of the volunteer departments are responding to lesser calls than we do, but I understand that because it's going to take the ambulance a lot longer to get out there, so that at least gets somebody there. If nothing else, calms them down or whatever. But for the most part, we're on the same page.
And our eyeballs the same to see the severity of the engine. Now, the other question is, in terms of funding, then, the city and county pay the subsidy to the ambulance. The hospital, as I understand it, does not contribute in any way financially to the ambulance service.
Right. Right now, there's not a subsidy. We're anticipating that there probably will be. And the, right now, the hospital does not participate in that. But that would be something for the elected officials and your staff to consider when we get that far, so.
I believe I asked them that when they left last time, and they...
Yeah, I think last time he was standing here, I believe you asked him that question.
He wasn't interested in that. Mr. Ray?
Yeah, Mayor, along those lines, I think we need to have a couple of things that need to kind of be discussed or at least brought out. We're not in the negotiation stage of the contract, and it's possible that there is no subsidy, but very unlikely. One thing I want to clarify is, although the call volume may be seventy percent city and thirty percent county, I do not believe that the division of a subsidy, if there is any, that that's the fair and equitable distribution of that. And the reason I say that is, is that without the city's seventy percent call volume, the county residents would not get ambulance service at a thirty percent cut of that subsidy. They couldn't, if it was just them doing RFP, they wouldn't, it would cost a lot more than that to get an ambulance service. So, they're getting a significant discount for that. The second thing is, is when the ambulance service calculates the cost of doing these emergency runs, all parts of the county, there's a significant cost enhancement to a single call that's three blocks away from one of the five, six, or seven stationed ambulances, then going all the way out to the farthest ends of the county. And so, it's my belief that the cost is one single contract, but the cost breakdown per run is significantly higher for those runs as they formulate how they're going to charge the community, higher for the county. So, I think there's a lot of discussions that need to take place on how that formula's broken down, and additionally, look very closely at what, if any, benefit the hospital is getting from this. And it doesn't necessarily mean that all these patients will be emergency-run to that hospital. We'll have to look at that. But I do encourage the hospital to actively look at being a partner, because we're going to be looking to a service that's actively partnering with us. So, there's a lot to be done, but this is a familiarization with the timeline, so you kind of get an idea of what's to come.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Well done, as usual. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Kevin Culligan. Have no idea what... Oh, I did look Google it, so I do have a little bit of idea what that is. You're up.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Commission.
Good afternoon.
Here today to talk to you about some updates to the local floodplain maps. This is a project that the Division of Water is working on, and it's something they typically do about every ten years. You may recall, there were some, the last revisions were in 2009, based on some restudy that's done in 2007. So, let's talk about what they're doing this time. Basically, this is a redelineation of floodplains. So, the county has gridded off into panels, and for each panel, there is a flood insurance rate map. And the map shows the limits of that floodplain boundary if that area's been studied. What they'll be doing this time is updating those floodplain boundaries based on more accurate elevations that have become available. accurate elevations that have become available and some new stream data that has been made available from a recent drainage study that was done by the county on areas of Panther Creek. Now, they're not, they're not doing the whole entire county. The, the project is limited to areas of the Green River watershed. So the, the Green River watershed, that's, that's basically the green area on the maps. So you can, you can split the county into two major watersheds. Uh, you have the green area, which is the Green River watershed. So most of the water in the city, uh, within those limits would drain south, gets into Panther Creek, gets conveyed to the Green River. The, the blue area, most of that water flows north and gets dumped in the Ohio River. Just so happens that, uh, a large number of the flood mitigation projects that the city did are located in that Green River watershed. We take a look at this map and we see that the Sherm ditch improvements, Harsh ditch improvements, some basins that were built on Horse Fork Creek, and there's some basins like out of Keeneland built on Big Ditch. All of those projects are located in that Green River watershed. And we can reflect back and see that these projects had a significant local impact. Large conveyance structures were installed, big box culverts replaced, small diameter covert pipes. We also built numerous basins. Uh, these are like the pictures from Sunrise Drive, 24th Street, Gates Ditch. Multiple basins were constructed. These, we have to remember, these, these projects were not designed to remove people from the floodplain. These projects were designed to alleviate flooding on the more frequent lower level storm events, like the 10-year, 25-year storm events. Uh, but they, they were not designed to remove people from the floodplain, which is a 100-year event. However, we do feel like these were significant projects, and so we brought them to Division of Water's attention and said, hey, these projects were done. Are they worth incorporating in this study? Are, are they worth taking a look at? And if so, can they be incorporated? Division of Water came back and said, yes, the, the Harsh ditch projects, Gates Ditch, Big Ditch, Horse Fork, all those are significant projects. We do think that they're worth incorporating. Uh, we do think that they could have an overall effect on, on some of the new floodplain maps that come out. Uh, however, scope's limited, budget's limited. We can incorporate those, but there'd be local costs to the community of $40,000 to do so. Yes, sir.
What do you mean incorporate them into the study? What's exactly, does that mean?
So, uh, for these projects, um, the Division of Water is already looking at some of the updates on the channels and streams. Uh, one of the main things that they would bring in to their study would be the basins that were built with these projects.
So that would make it, the study better then? I mean, I'm looking at...
It, it would make the study more accurate.
I'm just, I was here before and we started all these ditch things. Big ditches just kills me, but...
I speak.
Sure?
I, I think, I think, as Kevin explained this to me, more accurate data. And what that means is potentially, some people who are in the floodplain now have flood insurance, could be pulled out of the floodplain. Alternatively, people who are not in the floodplain have more accurate data, but their home is really at risk of flooding, they just don't know it, because the, the data's not accurate enough. They could find out they're in the floodplain. That might drive them to buy insurance rather than suffering a catastrophic loss to the house about flood insurance. So the bottom line for Kevin is more accurate data. Bottom line for a homeowner is that accurate data will either say I should be or shouldn't be in the flood.
Well, from a simpleton, this seems like an exercise in futility. The city's flat. And until you fix Panther Creek, we're always going to have these flooding issues. I mean, I don't, maybe it's too simple of an analogy, but the city's flat. I mean, where's the water going to go?
Yeah, we're, I don't think that, that we're gonna, we won't know until the study's done, but, you know, I don't think we're looking at a huge number of people aren't in the floodplain anymore. I think we're looking at, at more accurate information. So, um, one of the main things that, that flood insurance rates are based on is elevations. And so the more accurate data we have, then, then, um, the more accurate flood insurance rates are, and the more transparency there is to people about flood risk.
So is this an election cycle regulation type scenario?
Uh, I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, I mean, as, as the elected officials, as they change their thought process on things like this and regulations and streams and all that stuff, is this going to change when the next election cycle occurs?
I, I don't think so. I, I think this is kind of a, a routine, uh, process. It's, it's based on the level of funding Division of Water has. Uh, I think some of the funding they get from FEMA, and it's, I think it's based on level of funding, and then they try to scope of which areas are most outdated, which areas, um, could stand to have the most benefit from updating information.
So in the outcome, if we do all this stuff, what's the outcome? I mean, what is it? What do we get for this?
Um, we, we...
Am I jumping ahead?
Yeah, a little.
Okay.
If I can.
I'm trying to.
So, sure. But they do think that the, these projects do have value, that they can be incorporated. Uh, there's a fee, um, to the local community. Uh, the area in red, that's, that's the floodplain for these areas. So, you know, we're not, we're not talking about, uh, evaluating floodplain out in the middle of a cornfield. We're talking about floodplains that, that are in, in urban developed areas.
So they're all inside the incorporated city limits?
No, not all of it. A, a, a big portion of it is.
Okay.
We, we also asked them about the Sherm ditch improvements. They also came back with that and, and said, yes, we do think those projects have value. We do think that they could have an effect on the updates to the, the fire maps, the flood insurance rate maps. Uh, however, once again, uh, local costs to me, to the community, to add those in, uh, these are more, this is a $60,000 fee.
On top of the 40?
There in, there in red? I'm sorry.
That was, that would be on top of the 40, so it totaled 100 now?
Yes, sir. Okay.
Who's charging the fee? FEMA? Who, who would charge you this fee that we would have to pay?
Um, it would be, Division of Water has hired an engineering consultant to do this study. So, um, it, it would be, uh, like an MOA with Division of Water.
Okay. Thanks.
And Kevin, you should point out that this is a community-wide cost. It's not City of Owensboro cost. I spoke to Judge Mattingly last week, who said he's interested in this, and his county engineer participated in the discussion if there were questions. But he said he's interested in doing this because of the impact it could have after all this work.
And, and to, you know, this is what, kind of some things I've already discussed. You know, why, why would we want to get involved with this? Again, this is something that the Division of Water is doing regardless in, as it relates to updating some of these flood insurance rate maps. Uh, it is our position that they be, uh, as accurate as they can be. And we think that they should incorporate, um, all the data we have at hand. So there is transparency in flood risk. If someone owns a house in the floodplain, uh, they understand that risk. If someone's buying a house, they can understand that it is in the floodplain. Uh, it also affects flood insurance rates. The more accurate data, the more accurate flood insurance rates are assessed. We also think now is the opportune time to incorporate these projects. If, if we don't do it now, it could be, uh, 10 years plus before Division of Water comes back around and restudies, and then we would have to hope they would incorporate them at that time.
So you've built this cost into your budget you submitted for next, this year?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
What, uh, what prompted this? The insurance agencies? Thank you, Commissioner. What prompted this? Insurance agencies, like it did in 2009, because they started reaching out for a grab to get more money? I mean, that, that's what it looks like to me, and I understand it's through the state and floodways, but, uh, this could be pretty detrimental to a lot of people. In my industry, I see that it, it makes a difference in whether people can afford a house or not.
Sure. Uh, this is something that, um, Division of Water, um, has initiated. Now, exactly when they decide they're going to do it, how they're going to decide, I, I can't tell you for sure. Uh, but this is a process that Division of Water does on, on some level of routine basis. This time, they're doing it, like I say, because they have more accurate elevations. Uh, there's new technology out there that is getting more accurate elevations. Uh, I think it used to be contours were like, uh, within a couple of feet. Uh, now they're, now they can get elevations within inches. And that's kind of what happened in 2007. They were using, prior to that, they were using old maps that elevations ranged between five and 10 feet. In 2007, they could get within a couple of feet. Now we're talking about getting within inches. So, um, they're constantly narrowing and, and, and getting those flood maps more accurate, which is the goal of the flood insurance program. It is to communicate risk of flooding to people.
Could this help with some of the, uh, leniencies whenever you go look at a full development? For example, watersheds and, and retention basins, things of that nature?
No, it, uh, that is not, uh, that's not the intent of the program. It's, uh, the main intent of this is to show people that this is where the, the, um, the flood elevation gets to, and this is the elevation of your structure. Uh, this is your risk to flooding. And, and people that, that have a loan on a house in the floodplain, they do have to buy flood insurance, and flood insurance rates are, are based in part.
And most donors can go get a letter of map amendment from a surveyor a lot of times if it's not too deep into the floodplain to get them elevated out if, if they have a question about their elevation, correct?
Sometimes they can, and the reason for that is inaccurate elevations. So as, as Division of Water gets more accurate information, more elevate, more accurate elevations, loamers start to disappear, letter of map amendments start to disappear. So that, that's one of the reasons people can do that now, is there's inaccuracies in some of those floodplains.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Um, as Mr. Parrish said, I would recommend, uh, approaching the county for partnering with this if, if you choose to proceed. And I do have, um, Mark Braschler, county engineer, here with me. I also have, uh, Davis Murphy. He is an engineer for the consultant that's hired by Division of Water, uh, to try and answer any other questions that you have. And, um, I'd be happy to try and do that now.
Any other questions from the commission?
I've got, I've got one, because I've dealt with the area of town where they've complained bitterly about going from not being in the floodplain to being in the floodplain. It's the area off Tamarack Road. Uh, they are irate about it. And, uh, they said, you know, five years ago, four years ago, they weren't in the floodplain, and all of a sudden, they got their insurance bill and they were. And I can understand how they feel. And he said, and, and, you know, logically, we're not in the floodplain. We don't have water up to our doors, you know? We don't have the incidents to prove that we're in there. So the percentage of the question I've got is, if you do this, if this investment's made by the county and the city, is it more likely that more people who are not in the floodplain will suddenly be designated as being such? Or is the opposite true, where some of these people get relief? Because I've had to send it to Mitch McConnell and those folks to get federal help, because it, they, like you said, they have to go out and get another opinion to get out of the floodplain.
I, I can't tell you that. Uh, there's, until the study's done, like I say, Division of Water's going to, going to do the study regardless. We, is our position to incorporate more data, so it's more accurate. I can't tell you if there'll be people added or people taken out. There'll probably be a little of both. Um, the, the situation you mentioned on Tamarack, the, the other way to look at that is, those people were in the floodplain the whole time. Now they know they are. Now they know that they're prone to flood risk. So, um, now they have insurance if there is catastrophic flooding and they lose everything. So, um, their geographics were the same the whole time, you know? But now they, they know that there is a risk.
And Mayor, if I could add, I think if I could, could bring that back to Commissioner Glenn's point, those folks could, so I've lived here 15 years, never seen it flood like that. That doesn't relate to the 100-year flood that puts them in the floodplain. They could live there 85 years and say, no. But they could live there potentially, another, next year, we could have a 100-year event. And those folks that don't have flood insurance, their house is devastated. It's not repaired. So it's, we don't know if it's going to bring more people in or out, but it, from Kevin's point of view, it's a transparency issue. Should a homeowner know, or someone's going to purchase a home, should they know with the most accurate data possible that's, uh, it is, is or is not in a floodplain, there's significant risk of flooding? Or should we sort of just, well, we'll take the data we have and that's good enough? So it's just a question for the commission to wrestle.
So the 160, is that what you, is that what you said? 140, 100? I don't know. This number's here, is that done?
It's 60, 40, 100,000.
60, 40, 100,000.
If, if you do, all of them except Sherm, it's 40. If you include Sherm, it's 100.
Yes, that's correct.
Because it adds $60,000.
And then you negotiate with the county for a 50-50 split?
Or 95 and 5 or something.
Okay. Uh, then, then the 95, we're the 5, I can go on. How about that, Mark?
Better clarify who's doing what.
Okay. All right. Any other que, yes, sir. Commissioner Conda?
This report, whenever, let's say we, as an example, move forward with this, both city and county, regardless of what the split is, or who's going to pay for it, the report itself then comes out. And if you look at that from an economic development perspective, we were concentrating highly on our residents, which is great. But if that report then is available for economic development, for us to build out somewhere else, we continue to go out 54 and/or other areas, will that report be public for EDC to use or anyone else to be able to utilize in a way to build out the rest of our community? And is it going to be good or bad? Which you're not going to answer that question. Uh, to be able to look at this from an economic development perspective?
Sure. So whenever this study's done, this is about a two-year process, there will be updated flood insurance rate maps that become printed. And, and those will, those will become the flood insurance rate maps of, of record for this area. So, so that's, that's the public information. That's...
And I guess back to City Manager's point, this is a transparency issue that we're trying to engage ourselves with for the benefit of the community. Would you say yes or no?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That's kind of...
Yes, sir.
All right. Commissioner Vlade?
Uh, worst-case scenario, this report comes out, you're doing the entire community. This is Davis County specific. Um, what if it puts, uh, certain areas that have been prone to flooding in a position where they can't be habitable anymore and it's determined? So who, who gets to pay the bill for that one?
Well, it, it, um...
And nobody grandfathered in?
No, it, it's only certain areas of, like areas we talked about that they're reevaluating of the, of the Green River watershed. But, um, if, if someone gets added to, you know, we say added to the floodplain, if, if it's now, uh, the floodplain changes, moves, now they're, they're in the floodplain, then, um, to my understanding, if, if there's a loan on that house, they will probably have to buy flood insurance, so.
Correct. But I'm talking about the worst-case scenario of you have a, a couple of streets in the community, and I know where they're at, and I'm not going to say the names, that are prone to flood. You get a, a quarter inch of water, and they've got water up to their doorsteps. And, and no matter what amount of flood, you know, diversion that you use, it's not going to fix that. Uh, they're, they're kind of out of luck, so they're going to have to figure out a way. They're non-insurable, so they can't afford a house. One, they can't get out of where they're at, and, and they can't, no one can buy those houses. So that's, that's the fear, that you're opening up a whole different level of, of, of existence here for these people that, that live there. They may never be able to sell or live there, is what I'm getting at.
Sure. Uh, I get, if...
But if they get insurance, it's a moot point, right?
Yeah, and you have to look, you...
Does insurance bring them down?
If, to me, it's more important for those people to know that they are prone to that risk, rather than not know and then have a catastrophic loss.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Hey, Ted, I'm, one more question, I'm sorry.
Sure.
So on the flood insurance...
So on the flood insurance, if I own my home and I don't have a lien on my home and I have a mortgage, do I have to buy the flood insurance even if, you know, let's say you do the study and it says, no, you need to have flood insurance. You didn't, but you do now. Does it matter whether I have a mortgage or not? Am I legally required, kind of like car insurance, to buy that flood insurance? Am I mandated or is there wiggle room?
I, I don't think you are required to, no.
And now if you have a mortgage, probably your lien holder will require you to have it to protect their investment, is my guess.
That's correct.
Okay.
Good question. Okay, anybody else? None too painful, was it, Kevin?
No, sir.
Okay, good job. All right. City projects list, city manager Bill Parrish.
Thank you, Mayor. You have with you in your commissioner and rehead packets, the list of projects. If there are any questions on those, we'll answer those by exception.
Any questions? From the commission?
Tower Inn?
Pardon me?
Tower Inn, do we have anything new on the Tower Inn?
Commissioner Glenn, what'd you say?
The Tower Inn, do we have any? I've read what you've got. Gabe's Tower, do you have anything new to add to that?
Thank you, Commissioner. The, there's a couple of places where we're at with Gabe's Tower. First, if we look on the property maintenance side of things, the owner of Gabe's Tower has until early September to produce their plan. That plan is to either demolish or rehabilitate the structure. So from a notice of violation and property maintenance perspective, that's our next trigger point. And by request of their council, it was extended from its original date to the September date. Although that council's no longer representing the owners. From a, a look at, we updated the title opinion on this property within the last two weeks and there is a mortgage lien on it for about $275,000 from the original owners that they still maintain that interest. So we're in communication with those original owners about their intent and what they're planning to do with that. And we continue with that area. The owner of the Gabe Shopping Center is in the process of developing their external scheme for review and consideration under the grant program. We're looking at September as a complete date for the corner gas station by the Gabe's Tower to be vacated and then the city can put that out for bid for demolition. And then we're looking at December for the pawn shop that, that whole part was purchased as part of the community development program at it being vacated. And we can continue on with that whole rehabilitation. So, that's what we have so far and if there's any other questions, be happy to answer them.
Well, the only follow-up I have is how do you define for, for-
On his side of the ledger, rehabilitate.
What would he have to do to meet the definition of rehabilitate? Because I know he's done a few piecemeal things, painted it and done some stuff with windows.
Yeah, well, not being, not being in, ultimately in the shoes of the commission to make that decision, from my perspective, I would recommend that that be, that the building become occupiable. And that the, all of the emergency systems are, are back online, the asbestos has been remediated, the building has a certificate of occupancy and has a purpose. You know, it's our belief that that's somewhere between a $5 and $9 million venture to minimally get that building to a standard where it could be safely occupied and used as a, as a, some type of a facility to add to the community. And they have until September to produce that plan. And then at that time, we will certainly come back to the elected officials. Bill, I'm assuming that's the plan, with a status update and further guidance, request for further guidance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Commissioner Smith, right?
Any update on the Blue Bridge? The lighting of the bridge?
The update on that is that we have been in contact with council for the state and they have been in a position to basically not want to discuss the, the lighting until the litigation is completed. Now, the litigation is in form and substance done with the exception of the probate court in Texas on behalf of the minor heirs accepting the resolution and the settlement. In the meantime, what we've asked is, well, let's not let that stop us from starting to put on paper the, the contractual terms that everyone will be happy with moving forward on the City of Owensboro going in and lighting that Blue Bridge. And that got a warm reception and I think we're going forward with that. Because of that, we have in the last three or four days reached out to initiate our design system. And what I mean by that is putting the people in place to say, okay, we've got to demo the old system, we've got to do the contractual work with the state, we've got to design the construction documents for the new system, and we've got to be able to get something back to our elected officials for a final decision on, on let's move forward in funding. So with that being the case, I think we're farther ahead than we have been. And that's due to a little movement on this part of the state towards at least doing all the back work up into signing on the dotted line so that when that litigation and settlements accepted in Texas, we can hit the ground running. So I, I would like to come back and hopefully we have another update for you all sometime right around the first of the year.
I just have one question. What's the chances of us getting like a little executive summary of what we're going to talk about at these work sessions besides this blank piece of paper? So that we don't, I don't, I'm just speaking for myself. Is it on this something else? Is it on the laptop or iPhone or whatever the thing is? I don't, if it, if it is, then I need to get on it. Okay, that's where it is?
We can do that, Mayor. It was originally intended to be that this would be the, the session as a business meeting. It was moved out of 406 out here into this more formal set.
I see, okay.
Houston was in 406, it was a-
That's where we used to do it, that's why I'm kind of going back. Okay. So, if I can operate one of those things, I give an executive summary.
We can start to put on an executive-
No, I don't mind. I just want to learn, I guess, but I just, you know, and you, all right, you know, great job Kevin did talking about that, but that's difficult for, for some, y'all are living it every day. I'm not-
And we would not ask for a decision today on these items. These are just to brief you on them informationally. And over the next few days, I would talk with you and say, is there enough interest to put it on the agenda? That's not, that's not a vote, that's nothing along those lines. Is there interest in putting it on the agenda to have a full debate, to vet it out and decide, is it something in the public? Because the public doesn't comment here at these. That would put it out where the public could comment, the commissioners could comment, and you could say, let's, let's move ahead with that, let's vote on it.
So we'd have a little more information to go on before we met to make, okay. Thank you. Anything else before this work session?
Yeah.
Commissioner Vala?
Yes, thank you. International Bluegrass Music Center, a lot of work looks like going on them the outside, but are they inside now too? And is it progressing toward its estimated completion?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. The, the progress inside and outside is, is progressing well. Obviously, some of the curtain glass wall systems are, are key to getting the, the glass or getting the building pinned up and really do a lot of the stuff like drywall work. So where they can, they've been using plywood systems to cover up those entrances temporarily so they can do as much as they can on the inside. But it's really coming together well. You'll see brickwork is going in right now. Window glass work will be coming in shortly. On the inside, the electricians and the drywallers and finish workers are, are doing a lot of work. They're hanging a lot of fixtures and those types of things and bracket systems, blocking, all that kind of stuff. Simultaneous to that, on a parallel path, there's two other major components that are working and that is we're putting out the bid documents for the design and fab, or for the fabrication of the museum portion of the, of the interior, which there's ones that will fabricate all the exhibits and do all that kind of stuff. And then secondly is, a major component is the audiovisual piece of it, which is in the process of being bid out also. So, we've got three major moving parts to making this all work. The fourth then being the Bluegrass Music Center's administration of starting to program what's going to be in that first year, especially in that first six months so that it hits the ground running. And then lastly, the Bluegrass's side of the house is the restaurateur. We do not, not one has not been identified as of yet. And we're getting down seriously to critical path on being able to accommodate a build-out for a restaurant in the timeframe that it is open the same time the museum's scheduled to open, which is contractually obligated by the Bluegrass Museum.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Entertained a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Adjourn.